He was a person that to be recognized and thought of in our community that started out up there in the creek and almost in the on in the edge of Alabama but near and went right on up and went right through and had a wonderful career. He also served everybody. He was interested in serving everybody and he was also almost a neighbor to Dr. Spire, right across the woods there just a little bit. So I was very proud of him to see how he did and as one thing you can say, if you wanted your son to grow up well, you want him to grow up like Colonel Wendell Taylor. And we're appreciative of him and what he did for our county and I'd hope everybody always remembers it. And I thank you. Anybody else would like to speak? You're you're welcome. Go ahead.
What I remember about Wendell, I really didn't know him personally. I knew his brother Grady and Bruce, knew them pretty well. But I I never knew him, but when I first got hearing the name through the county, if you wanted anything done, call Wendell Taylor. I didn't know what position he was or in here and all, but they said that was the person to go to to get something done. Uh, and another thing, when I went down to Orlando, this where we just came back from, uh, the county meeting and all, somebody found out I was from Jackson County. And they said, well, so we we got one of y'all administrator. I reckon he was still their administrator at that time. And so we got one of y'all administrators, so y'all lost at our game. And I said a lot to me about him, but I reckon I never met him per but uh, but anyway, get back to the Texas dash uh, is is a disaster in itself. You know, and I feel for all the people that's out there going through all of that. And I hope that, you know, the Lord looks down on them and do what needs to be done and try to help them. Especially the ones that survive it, get through it. And I know the families of the little kids and all that. See, I'd be something terrible. But anyway, I thought.
Anyone in the, anyone in the audience who wants to speak, you're welcome. And anyone that also wants to speak later on, if you need to speak for something, those items on the agenda, if you'll come forward and give us your name and address and phone number, we'll have it for a record. You're welcome to come. I should have included that just a little bit quicker.
Chairman, I'd like to say that this is a follow-up and I think you said it very well and it covered most of the bases. But I had the opportunity to work with Wendell when I was a city commissioner at the city of Marietta. And also had the opportunity to work with him as an architect. And again, I think you covered all the bases, but I always found Wendell to be very responsive. Uh, and he was definitely dedicated to doing a good job as the administrator and looking after the interest for Jackson County. And so he did a, did a wonderful job. Sure did.
Thank you for saying that. He certainly, excuse me, he certainly was intense. Every move he made as far as what was professional, especially what was expected of him as well. But he was a exceptional, very exceptional person and he exemplified that every way he could, always profess. Anybody want to? Dr. Spire, do you leave us in a word of prayer?
Yes, we have.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, come and thank you for the opportunity to assemble here. We ask your blessings upon everyone who was attendance and those who could not be. We also ask for your blessings upon those who experience encouragement throughout the world and throughout our county. We pray for your divine guidance and all decisions of late today. These were all blessings we ask of your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I'd also like to recognize our new administrator who's sitting right over here on my head. Uh, we're looking forward to a good, long relationship with him helping us and moving this county forward, Mr. Jim Dean.
Appreciate it, Mr. Westbrook.
Thank you. We have one more thing that we want to bring up. No, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, do we want to go ahead and accept the motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah, we can go right ahead. Thank you for reminding me.
Mr. Westbrook, we do have a couple of amendments to the agenda, item number seventeen, which is contract for debris removal services. We've modified the contract. Instead of a three-year contract, we're doing a five-year contract. That's the only change in that agenda item.
Okay, offer a motion that the agenda be approved?
There's one more thing, Mr. Donfro. Uh, Mr. Westbrook, we also want to modify, modify section four, agenda item twenty-three, uh, to incorporate the actual land swap agreement and the resolution authorizing the the agreement. Uh, so we're not changing, we're not adding agenda items or taking away, we're just modifying it.
Offer a motion to approve the agenda with the described modifications to the agenda as described by Mr. Dean.
A motion taken by Commissioner Brand. All in favor, raise a hand. Hey, let's go ahead.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. I would like to invite Ms. Bridgette Rayburg up to the podium. Uh, as you know, today is Bridgette Rayburg's last day with the Board of County Commissioners. She has served as our business manager. Um, so I want to recognize her today and I want to go ahead and read a proclamation that I would like y'all to adopt, recognizing Ms. Bridgette Rayburg.
Let it ride on.
All right. Whereas Bridgette Rayburg began her tenure with the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners in two thousand twenty-one. She worked diligently as an administrative assistant before becoming the business manager of administration. And whereas she has served this county with unmatched dedication, heart, and excellence over the past four years. And whereas Mrs. Rayburg has tackled every task with professionalism, compassion, and a commitment to excellence that raised the bar for all of us. And whereas she has often been the first smiling face visitors see when walking into administration and the calm, capable presence the rest of us relied on daily. And whereas her dedicated work, whether managing board agendas, coordinating schedules, offering help to departments across the county, are showing up for a coworker with a word of encouragement or thoughtful gesture, Bridgette did it all and she did it with joy. Now therefore, we, the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners, along with the staff and citizens of Jackson County, extend our heartfelt thanks for her commitment and excellence over the four years of her career with the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners and wish her all success in her future endeavors claimed on this day, the eighth day of July, two thousand twenty-five. Going to get a picture of you, you know that.
Chairman, I might say a couple of words.
Yes, sir. You're recognized.
I've had the opportunity to work with Bridgette for the last four years and I certainly can't add a whole lot more to what Mary said. She hit the nail on the head as far as describing Bridgette's capabilities and qualifications. Uh, I've certainly enjoyed working with her. I will say that any time that I ever asked Bridgette to do anything, whether it was writing a letter or making a contact, she was very responsive, but she handled it very responsibly, very professionally. And Bridgette, you certainly will be missing. And whoever takes over your position will have big shoes to fill. Done a wonderful job and I appreciate your, again, your responsiveness and your professionalism with what you carry out your duties.
May I double that? Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that in the next few weeks, we will, we will realize just how much we will I've been here two and a half years and she has schooled me, taught me, done for me. Uh, much more than I've ever appreciated. She, she kept me in line. Did things when I'd get back here, it ought to be done. Uh, and it's like Commissioner Donfro said, if you ask her to do something, that's all you had to do was that.
That's right.
Because she would do it right.
I agree.
And I appreciate that. We will miss you.
Thank you.
I like, I like that, that instead of asking her to do things, she usually has it done before you ask her. And always, always with a smile on the face. And we have an internal joke that when she was with the City Stevens office, we were always kid about her running against before their office. I was unsuccessful in talking to her during any incident, but very efficient person, very calm, uh, very calm and collected individual, able to handle difficult situations with a calm manner. So I appreciate you. Wish you the best.
I want to say if everything, anything that I had, he would always do it and be nice and calm about respect and she gonna be truly missed. And I hope you good luck in future endeavors.
I thank you for teaching me what little bit I know about that. I haven't been here very long. Anyone in back there wants to speak? You'd like to say something? Ms. Bridgette?
I just want to thank the board for the opportunity to serve the county. Um, it's, it's been a pleasure and a joy. And while I'm looking very much forward to my next opportunity, I'm, I'm going to miss all of you. Um, you've all been just a pleasure to work with. So thank you.
We'll take you back if you want to. Thank you, Dr. That get us pretty close to where we're going to start?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
We, we need to accept the proclamation.
I move to accept the proclamation.
Motion and second, do the proclamation. All in favor, raise a hand. All opposed, same sign. Move on. We're in Mr. Dean.
With Westbrook, the under section one, item one, Ms. Sarah Sun is, will do the recognition in Mr. Jeffrey Ray.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thanks, Charlie. No worries.
So we're here today to recognize Mr. Timothy Perry. I'm sure most of y'all know him. Um, uh, we're celebrating his ten years of service today, or this month. Uh, so little background on Tim, I had to cut it short because we can talk good about him all day long, but uh, Tim and his wife Drea have been married for ten years and have two children together. Uh, I ain't put, we ain't even put their names on there. So anyway, uh, Tamara and Koya are his two children. We've got nicknames for them and that road and bridge, but we'll leave that alone. Uh, when Tim isn't working for the county, he serves as a deacon at the church. He's on a Sneeze town council. He's a Sneeze volunteer firefighter. He works at a local funeral home and cuts grass on the side while also enjoying time with his family. Tim is of Greek origin, meaning honoring God. When Tim came to the road and bridge department, he was hired as a dump truck driver. And since then, he went to a grader for a little while. Then he went to a loader in the pit. In two thousand twenty-one, he moved into the shop assisting fleet maintenance operations and handling inventory control. In two thousand twenty-two, Tim became the assistant road and bridge director. The character quality we chose for him was virtue versus impurity. And that's the moral excellence demonstrated in my life as I consistently do what is right. So regardless of which role Tim takes on, he does with virtue, providing moral leadership wherever needed. He does not allow outside attitudes or opinions to negatively impact his actions. And that's no matter what role he, what hat he's got on and role he's doing, he's going to do it right and, and and make sure it's taken care of. The benefit, Tim is the type of person you can, you can go to for sound advice and can also trust regardless of the task at hand. And Tim, we appreciate seeing you. Thanks, y'all.
Mr. Westbrook, item number two.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Ms. Sarah Sun will recognize employee of the month.
Okay.
Good morning. Um, I would like to invite Ms. Brianna Booker up here as July employee of the month. Whereas Jackson County has established an employee of the month program to recognize one employee to represent the various departments. And whereas Brianna Booker began her employment with the county on June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, she currently serves as permit tech for the building department and has been selected as employee of the month for July, two thousand twenty-five for the standards that she has displayed in the performance of her job duties. And whereas Brianna is hardworking, dedicated, and a knowledgeable employee, every day she goes above and beyond her job duties. She strives for excellence every day and takes pride in being punctual and reliable at work. She is affable and pleasant and has a good rapport with the contractors and homeowners she deals with on a daily basis. Brianna has recently taken the initiative to create a tracking tool that cross-references temporary RV allowances with building permitting timelines to assist in monitoring the status and updating property owners of impending deadlines. Brianna, recent, during a recent employee station shift, Brianna took the lead in assisting employees with cleaning out items no longer needed and packing and moving items to relocate. No small task for those who had been at their current stations for nearly ten years. She is a pleasant and cooperative coworker and employee. Thank you, Brianna, for being for community development and for the citizens we serve. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County, Florida commends and congratulates Brianna Booker on her selection as employee of the month for July, two thousand twenty-five.
Chairman, while they're getting pictures made, I'll move to approve Ms. Booker as the employee of the month for July and authorize a check in the amount of two hundred dollars. I've adopted the proclamation and ask you to sign it, Mr. Chairman.
I can sign it. Got a motion and a second. Approve that. Everybody raise a hand. Either hand, go ahead.
Ready for the next item, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, next item, uh, Mr. Westbrook is a request of a Florida adopt resolution for Jackson County uh, to in support of the executive office of the governor. The Department of Government Efficiency, uh, recently staff had put together an enormous amount of information for uh, the EOG Doge, uh, which entailed budget information, uh, staffing, contracts, grant agreements, and all that had to be shipped to the state of Florida. Uh, we're asking that the commission adopt resolution in support of the EOG Doge efforts.
I'll move by talking to the resolution.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Everybody in favor, raise a hand. Same sign, move on.
Uh, next item, Mr. Chairman, is the request for board adoption of resolution for Jackson County Museum grant application, matching funds. Uh, this is an application that this county wants to submit uh, to the state of Florida for the grant to continue with the uh, improvements at the proposed museum on the endeavor property. We're asking for the board to adopt the resolution in support of the application.
Y'all heard the recommendation. What's the board plan?
This is a, this is a, oh, I see here, a cultural facilities grant, yeah.
Yes.
Offer a motion that we adopt a resolution and authorize you to, Chairman, sign.
Got a motion and a second. Resolution, all in favor, raise your right hand, move on.
Uh, Mr. Westbrook, the next item is another resolution, uh, through the state of Florida, the Water Management District, uh, because we're a, um, little area of opportunity counting, we are eligible for reduced or waived permit fees through the Water Management District. Uh, we have to make that request in the form of a resolution. We want the commission to approve that resolution.
Is this, Mr. Dean, is this for reducing or eliminating?
It, it is.
I wish it eliminated.
It reduces it to zero and Mr. Dean will comment if he wants to, but it's my understanding and my community with it, that it does reduce it to zero.
Are the permit fees for, for a well?
Could be a well, could be for multiple things.
Okay. With, for public, uh, water systems.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the resolution and authorize the chairman to sign. Got a motion, I have a second. Everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Move along.
Chairman, I'm moving to section three now, uh, request for board review and approval of alcoholic beverage license uh, to enable the pilot travel center to sell beer and alcohol, uh, asking for board approval.
I'll offer a motion to approve the alcoholic beverage license for pilot travel, son, number three seventy-four.
Yeah. Got a motion and a second, though. Mr. Brandt, all in favor, raise your right hand. That'll be four to zero. Four to one. I'm not against it, I'm just not for it. All right, move on to.
Next, next section is the consent uh, under section four, the consent agenda items, uh, asking for the board to take action on the consent agenda.
We need it. I'll, I'll offer a motion to approve the consent agenda as included in the packet.
A motion to approve, a second, all in favor, raise a hand. Move, move on.
Okay. Uh, item number two in section four, I don't know if Mr. Melvin is here, but, uh, the the, anyone's representing from D H M here? Okay, um, I'll take that. Mr. Chairman, if that's okay with you.
That's different.
Um, uh, in association with Project Jaws, the improvements to Mashburn Road uh, were solicited for bids. We had multiple bidders. Uh, the low bid, which incorporated the asphalt paving of Mashburn Road, that end where it runs from the curve all the way down to, um, New Hope Road, uh, is the section that will be addressed. It addresses the stormwater, waterline, and other improvements. This is a rural infrastructure fund grant made available through the Department of Commerce. And, um, we're asking the commission to approve the low bid, which is Anderson, Columbia. Um, but we will not, we will issue a change order prior to doing the award to address some value engineering to reduce the cost of the asphalt paving.
Do you have any idea what the value engineering items are?
The value engineering item that we will focus on is definitely the asphalt paving, trying to shift some of that cox around throughout the rest of the items that are actively approved.
Reducing the thickness or changing the type of asphalt?
Could be the width, uh, could be multiple different things, but, um, we want to try and get that down because it being a federal money, uh, that is given to the state of Florida to administer, uh, through the Department of Commerce, the, uh, riff money cannot be used to put asphalt down. So we want to try and shift some of those costs around to reduce that cost that cannot be paid with grant money.
I'll offer a motion to approve Anderson Columbia as the low bidder with, uh, including the base bid with the paving alternate.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, move along.
Item number three, uh, Mr. Westbrook, is the annual mosquito management plan. Uh, this is a, uh, done on an annual basis. The funding comes from the state of Florida and we do a match. Uh, and speaking with the health department, there's still money in the account that it was going to roll over into next year. So we're asking the commission to approve the budget for this, uh, service as well as the mosquito management plan. If you have any questions, the health department folks are back here to answer any questions.
I, I got a question or two. We have a lot of farmers and ag people that have bees around to pollinate their crops. Are we going to be able to contact those people or ask them to contact us? Do, do that either.
Uh, yes, sir. We, we tend to follow the beekeepers to have a list with the state of Florida. And so we try to stay away from any farms that have bees. Now, sometimes they move them and we don't know, but if they'll call us and let us know, we tend to stay away.
I understand that.
So if the farmers or either the beekeepers let us know, we'll, like I said, we'll stay away from those areas.
Yeah, we, we got that covered, basically. That's all. I don't, I don't want to lose our bees.
Right, yes, I understand.
Anyway, we might need them again.
Right, that's right. You're right.
Oh. You want to speak, then? All in favor?
Has the plan, but just real quickly, and as I know, the plan that we've approved, uh, has been successful, effective, and, uh, uh, in keeping the speed of population down, at least in areas in my district. Uh, any changes to the plan, is there, also, is there any increased cost of, uh, or are matched that portion of it?
As far as your match, we're not asking, usually you give us twenty thousand dollars as match, but we're not asking for that this year because the state, um, is planning to give us around sixty-seven thousand.
Okay.
So, um, that has been enough to cover our costs so far. So, and with the rollover, um, we didn't need to match.
Is there, has there been any change, uh, as commissioners, if we get calls from any of our constituents, has there been any change as to how we uh, notify and communicate that, uh, to, uh, the health department?
Uh, nothing, nothing's changed the usual.
They can always call the health department. They can call the health department to get put on the list if they want to be on the list.
Pastor Brad?
I think she just answered my question.
Yeah.
Has the, has the coverage changed the routing of the mosquito product? In terms of the coverage, the rural areas, have you changed the routing or is it the same as it's been for several, last several years?
Yeah, we do, we're still doing the, basically the same. If you want to be on the list, just give us a call and we'll fit you in. We have a program, we can fit you into our route, our existing routes.
Okay.
The thing is, we, we can only spray once every twenty-one days. So we set it up so that we, uh, it's on a rotating basis.
Okay.
With our drivers and so.
I was just wondering, because I noticed I used to see it frequently in the District One here. I haven't seen it recently. I was just wondering, has it changed? It's okay.
But I do encourage you every year to call.
Okay.
You know, or the, the, the public to call. Once they get it, because we, we kind of start all over the next mosquito season. So, uh, yeah, just tell us, call us back and we'll put you on the list.
Pastor Brad, go ahead.
Ken, is there any way to make the phone number public? I mean, I know it's public, but I advertise it or something. We can, we can call us.
Figure out how to do that, yeah.
Maybe on Facebook or?
Can you just call the Jackson County Health Department?
Yes. Yeah. We'll talk.
But can we expose that in the newspaper or like you said, on Facebook? Can we expose your number to them, please?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, it's a, it's a county contract, so that's where we'll have to work with the county on how they want to get that out. But it's definitely our number you would use.
I think we can also help facilitate that with some help from Mary.
Yeah.
And get that out.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Y'all heard the recommendation, we got to vote, don't we, Mr. Kurt? I think we ought to give. Make a motion or say? Make a motion to approve it. We got a motion. Well, Mr. Kurt, it's second by Dr. Spire. All in favor, raise a hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Good to see you. All right, so go right ahead.
Mr. Westbrook, item number four, it's a request for ratification of the Justice Assistant Grant, which is a JAG grant. It was approved at the last meeting. Uh, the sheriff's department noticed that there was an, uh, the date was inaccurate in the agreement that was previously approved. So we're asking the board to ratify the agreement again, uh, because we did change the date.
Do I understand that justice assistant grant? Is that what I'm reading? Y'all heard the recommendation? All in favor, please. Okay.
Offer a motion to ratify the certificate. Where I see is Chairman to sign.
Uh, in fact, all right. Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, raise a hand. All the same sign, move along.
Uh, item number five, Mr. Westbrook, is another justice assistant grant, it's a JAG grant. Uh, and the sheriff's department is asking for a letter to be signed by the chair to authorize fifty-one percent of those funds to be used by, uh, the fast, the drug task force for the sheriff's department. It's just a grant that we receive and they basically, uh, provide a recommendation on where they want to use those funds. And they're asking that the committee authorize the use of those funds with the drug task force.
Motion, my Mr. Brandt? Go ahead. Go right ahead.
I just want, want to re-ask the question I've asked on several occasions. Are there any, uh, obligations to this board to maintain funding in those positions if the grant should have disappeared?
The drug task force, Mr. Spire?
Well, any of the grants that, if the sheriff's going to add personnel, is that correct?
Uh, the, the ones that we Uh, the, the ones that we have, just these, like the item four and six, it does not, it does not, it's not associated with staffing, let's see. I'd have to go back and read that. I don't want to mislead you, Mr. Spire. But as I understand it from reviewing these, the items four and five are not associated with staffing. Especially the drug task force money that's basically, you know, may be involved in spending some money on overtime. It could be on, you know, doing certain things that will assist the drug task force and.
Right. The reason I ask, I know in the past there have been some grants that the board was obligated to maintain funding for the positions should the grants disappear. I just wanted to be aware of those kinds of things.
And, you know, we can go back and anytime in the future, we can incorporate that into the position description associated with that grant. So that if the, the grant funds expire, then that position would have to expire if that's the desire of the board.
All right, thank you, sir.
I, I don't know about now, but years ago, when I was involved in that kind of thing, they did get enough money. They could hire physicians. Now they don't get enough money to hire physicians.
Oh, really?
It's basically for supplies, for radios, ammunition, whatever.
Okay.
And stuff like that. It's not enough to hire anybody.
Thank you.
Got a motion, I need a second. Got a second, Mr. Crutchfield, all in favor, raise your right hand, move along.
Item number six, Mr. Westbrook, is a nine-one-one rural county grant program, grant agreement twenty-five oh four twenty-two. Uh, the, it's used for enhancements and improvements to the nine-one-one system. And we're at, it's, we're asking the commission to approve the grant agreement.
Let me, let me stop us right there for a moment. Is six, seven, and eight all basically the same thing, or is that somewhat different?
Uh, six and seven are basically the same thing. They're nine-one-one grant agreements for items associated with the nine-one-one system.
Board pleasure, we double those up? Okay, read that one too, please, sir.
Okay, uh, number seven is a, a grant agreement twenty-five oh four twenty-three is for software licensing improvements to the nine-one-one system. So asking the commission to approve both items six and seven.
Chairman, I'll offer a motion to approve grant number twenty-five oh four twenty-two and grant twenty-five oh four twenty-three for, by and authorize you as the chairman to sign.
I understand. Got a second. Got a motion by Mr. Don Froot, second by Mr. Crutchfield. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, move along.
Mr. Westbrook, item number eight is the board, a request for the board to approve the grant agreement for the law enforcement assistant grant. This is basically the legislative appropriation from the state of Florida for the past few years to increase salaries for sworn officers at the Sheriff's Department. This year, that grant agreement does stipulate that there's enough money to provide increases in those salaries for the sworn officer. And this is for the Sheriff's Department, not the protection facility.
This is for sworn officers only?
Yes, sir.
Which is, basically, what officers are there?
Fifty-four, fifty-eight, I believe, Mr. Don Froot. And that's coming from the sheriff. That's not a Jim Dean quote.
I've heard the recommendation, what's the board's pleasure?
Make a motion to approve it.
Got a motion by Mr. Crutchfield to approve, I have a second.
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Don Froot, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, move along.
Uh, Mr. Westbrook, item number nine is a renewal of a existing hazard grant that we currently receive. This is for the next fiscal year, and it's grant, Hazmat twenty-five dash twenty-six. We're asking for the commission to approve the, the grant agreement.
I'll ask Keith this, but are, are these dollars sufficient to handle the, the task that we're expected to perform?
Yes, sir, they are. The, in a brief summary, it's basically, I do inspections for sites that have hazardous materials above a certain level and just make sure that they have what they say they have in normal.
We actually go out and put our eyes on the.
Yes, sir, I go out, put eyes on them. Last year, I think we did eight. And so it's, it's sufficient to cover and actually gives us some funds to move towards some hazmat-related type item that we can purchase. That's typically what we do with the funds.
With that being confirmed, I'll offer a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six hazmat grant agreement. Again, authorize you as chairman to sign.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve on the hazmat grant agreement, all in favor, raise your hand, move along. These next two, can, are they like kind? Ten and eleven?
Uh, no, sir, they're, they're sort of.
Okay, we'll take them one at a time.
Uh, item number ten, Mr. Westbrook, is a MOU between the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners and the school board. And the, and for, in the instance of a natural disaster, the school board in Jackson County would have an MOU that would describe specific services that would be provided by the school board for seventy-two hours. And I don't know if Keith wants to comment on it or if y'all have questions. But this is renewing an existing MOU, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Are there any substantive changes between this agreement and those in the past?
Um, no substantive changes in this one. Um, and my recommendation to the administrator was move forward. I, I think there's some, few small things that we could discuss moving forward for next time, but I, I suggest we move ahead with storm season coming, and it's the same agreement that we were with last time.
All right, y'all heard the recommendation, what's the board's pleasure?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-six MOU with the Jackson County School Board and authorize chairman to sign.
Might I can sign it? Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve, all in favor, raise your hand, all opposed, same sign, move along.
Mr. Westbrook, item number eleven is a, a, something that we do on an annual basis, an operation plan between the Florida Division of Forestry and the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners. Uh, in talking with Mr. Maddox, this is, there's nothing changed significantly within it. And it just describes our operating procedures whenever we do that a disaster or in an event that we need to work together on, on an issue.
Right. And you okay with it?
Certainly, yes, sir. It's, it's a mutual aid, basically, that outlines what they'll supply and we'll do the same like kind.
What's the board's pleasure?
I'll offer a motion to approve it. I, I guess I got a question. I don't know that I've, I've ever really realized this, but are, are we actually leasing equipment from the forestry department or personnel or?
So the, Charlie may speak to some of this, but we have, we have equipment that's on loan to us from forestry. You more specific on that, Keith?
We just have a couple of, like, can tools or small pumps that we loan at no cost from the Forest Service.
This is the list that's included, fire flower and blade and.
Now, the fire flower blade is the list of equipment that was with the Shippola Station out, out there on Conestell Road. So they enter into agreement where they list the equipment available in this county that will respond first. Of course, if a buyer is larger, they'll bring in their assets from all across the other districts. But, um, they just outline what they have available at the station out on Conestell Road, uh, that they respond for. It's just a, it's a mutual aid agreement that if, if we call for a wildfire or a blood fire, they're going to come. And if they get the situation where they can't handle something, then they're going to call us, work with the department.
This basically is just a list of resources that they normally have available.
Yes, locally. Now, we've had instances in the past where it's thrown, where they've had to bring in air assets and other wildfires from different regions of the state, or they make that confidential ground.
And if I remember correct, I think that document has some loaned items, their assets, but some of the volunteer departments have those assets to deploy as needed as well. So it, there's two documents that are similar. One has a fiscal impact and, and it's not up yet. But, so I, I can't remember some of the wording interchangeable there.
Thank you.
I have a motion.
I offered a motion.
Okay, second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, move along.
Just for clarification, my motion was to approve the forestry operations claim and authorize the chairman to sign.
Item number twelve, Mr. Westbrook, is the, at a last or previous board meeting, the commission was advised to modify the tuition reimbursement agreement that is currently, that was currently in place to a language in it to make it more, to where this, the county, should they have to enforce the agreement, would have better teeth in the agreement, and Michelle can jump in if she wants to. For example, if we fund the, a firefighter, EMT, or a paramedic to go to school, we pay for that school. Then if they owe us three years of work, and if they don't follow through with that three years, then what we would have to do is to enforce our agreement, requiring them to pay back the, the money that the county advanced to pay for their education. And this is just a modification to what we already have in place. And Ms. Michelle, if you want to, um, yeah.
Uh, if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer, but.
Question I would care for is to, have we ever had that happen to us?
We have, and that, that's what prompted this change. The original agreement was drafted by staff. It wasn't drafted by me. It didn't provide for the county to recover attorney's fees and costs in the event that we did have to file a legal action. Um, I've also added, added the employee consent to us withholding reimbursement from their final paycheck if that also becomes necessary. Those are really the two major changes.
Go ahead. Are there any exceptions? For example, if the person did two, if a half a year versus three, would, would there be some exceptions in terms of what the payback would be?
Yes, so the balance is forgiven based on the amount of time that they continued to work for the county after they received their education because the county did derive a benefit from, you know, from their service.
So it's forated based on, on the service, okay.
Have a motion. Not, Mr. Crutchfield to approve it, here, second?
I'll second.
Second, must be the unapproved. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, move along.
Uh, item number thirteen is RFP twenty-four twenty-five dash nineteen for debris monitoring services. We're asking the commission to authorize the RFP, going out for RFP for those services. And in conjunction with that, also requested the, the board approve the ranking committee proposal, which would be comprised of Mr. Keith Maddox, Mr. Jeffrey Register, Mr. Tim Perry, Mr. Lucas Mayo, and Mr. Crutchfield.
And who, who is the, who most recently served as the debris monitoring contractor? Was it, who was it?
Debris tech.
Who was it?
Debris tech.
Debris tech, okay. What they had is?
I think they have a Tallahassee office, I think they have a, I have, I know they have Tallahassee.
But they, they were the firm or the contractor that participated in the tornado, uh, monitoring. Correct. Just, just curious information. I'll offer a motion to approve the request for proposals, also approve the, the ranking committee is described by Mr. Dean.
A motion, I hear, second? Okay, Mr. Brant, sir, all in favor, raise your hand. Same sign, move along.
Mr. Westbrook, the next item is to request for approval of the RFP twenty-four twenty-five, which would solicit proposals for insurance for the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners, which would include property casualty liability and workers' comp and automobile insurance. We're asking for the commission to approve the RFP so that we can put it out for performance.
You've heard the administrator's recommendation. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Westbrook, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we, we want to go ahead and identify the Board of County Commissioners as the ranking committee for that. If that's okay with, uh, chairman. Okay, so we all, asking for approval, do the RFP with the ranking committee as identified.
All right. Yep, still got a motion, I need a second. Anybody want a second? I'll second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Branch, you did make a motion, did you? And a second, Mr. Westbrook, to approve, uh, uh, going out to, uh, RFP, I guess this is for request for qualifications along with the.
Proposal, it will be a proposal.
Being set up as the five commissioners. Got a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, clarifications?
Yes, sir, I understand. The request for proposal or qualification.
Proposal.
Proposal, okay, RFP. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion fails, three to two. And, uh, I had said at the last meeting that I'm, I'm satisfied with our current vendor. And I feel like there's enough value in having our current vendor remain on. And I had stated that I was not in favor of going out for RFP the last time, and my, my position has not changed on that.
And because it hasn't been bid in a lot of years, I am the other direction. I don't know how we can save money unless we request bids, giving a bid away. And if y'all are giving me that I'll get away from this job and I'll work on every one of those ways for you and be glad to take them if you're not going to make me bid.
I, I, I agree with Mr. Donald Froot there, and I know we have done this and some other sections. You know, and I do know we do stuff for bid, but we have had a vendor that, you know, it'd been a long time that we kept using the same one. And that, and I like, I feel like that we need to stay with what we've been getting from a long time.
There, there's, there's some value in, there's some value in that track record. And there's some value in that, that, that vendor is local and provides, uh, I'm a local businessman myself. Uh, you know, I think there's some value in dealing with somebody that is local, uh, and when I say local, I'm talking about blocks away.
I would think it'd be valuable as long as we're competitive. If we have a reason but not to be competitive, which is the way I have looked at it, then you're welcome to speak, sir, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Michael Rich for the Record Board Insurance. I have kind of instigated this conversation over the past months about having an opportunity to have a competitive bid situation. You are here making a decision today with no information about what the market can do for you. And I, as I said at the last meeting, this is not an, a decision to make a change. It is a decision to do due diligence for the people of Jackson County and for your, for the services here. And you say, well, I'm, I'm satisfied, but if you don't know what's out there, how do you know there's not something better? Especially when I am of, we, we pull public records, we've done the homework, I'm not here, you know, trying to, on, on a wing and a prayer, hoping we can do something good for you. Uh, we do this every day. And there is significant savings in premium that you should consider. Now, you get to weigh that during this process against what you currently have. It would be incumbent upon anyone who responds to convey that and give you the information to then make a decision about what your options are. But this refusing to put out an RFP is basically saying, we don't care what it costs, we don't want to look at anything else. I don't know how, um, it's good governments and it's good fiscal policy to give this a look. And we know that you have a significant savings opportunity and we have comparable services and coverages. And that's what this process would do. Your vote here today would not be to make a decision. It would be to do due diligence and look at all the options with all the information. I, I don't, I don't see how that is a hard ask for, it's good governments, I, I, governments, I don't see how that is a, how do you look at your constituents and say, hey, we, we've done all we can to look at opportunities to save taxpayer dollars? When, when you, you've got an RFP prepared, ready to go, your staff's already done the work. We've got everything ready to go as well to respond, and, uh, there's significant, when I say significant, we're talking about well, in the six figures, how many multiple six figures, I'm not exactly sure, but be nice to look at. It's real money, it's real taxpayer money, and I guarantee you, for every, I see it, I see in the community, when a homeowner's personal insurance goes up ten percent, they call every agent in town. They work for their money. It's, you know, it's hard to write that check.
If I remember right.
I'm from Liberty County, and I, I'm from Liberty County, lived there my entire life. Uh, we, uh, you know, I service the Panhandle here. And that's why I'm here, every time you guys speak about this, I'm here at your service. Uh, we did a great thing last year for Liberty County. You, you should, those, those are things that should be considered in the sunshine for the benefit of Jackson County, but you don't have to change, but go through the process. Be, be informed, look for opportunities to save money where you can. That's a great exercise, the work's been done by your staff. All you have to do is put out the RFP and then evaluate publicly. I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm at a loss for any additional word, but thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
I appreciate your, uh, opinion on that, I'm in business, in the propane business. Not real competitive. I'm talking about probably more so competitive than what you are, they're people which change for nickel a gallon, hundred gallons, they're only gonna say five dollars. But, uh, and I'm not saying you wouldn't give the good service either. But, uh, I always try to give, and I know you'd probably do too, to get best service you can give. And, uh, like I say, I, the people that will change just for a little bit, you know, but sometime that service, and I feel like we've been getting good service from the people we're dealing with, and they already know our operation, and they've been doing it for fifty years. And that's gotta be something to say, and I know you like to have the business. But sometime competitive business are gonna come in maybe a little under. But pretty soon they'll be back up to that. And I'm not opposed to, you know, a, a real, real opposed of getting a competitive price, just to see what it is. But even if it was a lit, tad more, it may be better to go with a, one of the tad more. And then kind of locking yourself in to have it pretty much go with just the cheapest. And I, I, I've dealt with that all, all my, I do a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Crutchfield, one more thing, and I appreciate the time of the commission. Again, the subject matter here, the vote is to look at the information, not make a change. You, all, all the points you're making there are great points, that's what you do during the evaluation period. Jackson County will save money just going through the process. You can look at Liberty County, what they did, you know, they, they come in and drop their, their premium. You, you could say where you are and see a significant savings in premium if you go through the RFP process. You create a competitive, you're doing, it's a disservice not to do this at the point where you've got all of the, all of the work done, and you, you're, you're, you're basically telling your incumbent, we're not changing, charge us what you want. An RFP process says, we may change, sharpen your pencil. Just the point Mr. Westbrook said, if he didn't have to bid on anything, you could charge what you want.
Currently, we, we're using the Florida Association of Counties for, as our, our insurance, our insurer.
Have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Bryant, you represent.
Did we, we voted to not to accept anything? We just voted three to two to not go out for a question proposal.
Yeah, it wasn't quite clear, but yes, here.
So we're not going to solicit, solicit any proposal, anybody else's proposal, but the one we have that. Is that what we just did?
Yes, we would not do an RFP based on the vote.
For anyone.
For, for insurance, no.
But let me, let me ask this right here, may I interrupt you? Am I hearing us right that we not gonna request for a proposal, which is good, that's fine, but not even for bids either?
We would not go out for proposals based on the, the potential vote that you're, you're cast.
Well, I think now we had already voted for that.
We did three, uh, we did the same thing with health insurance not too long ago, based on the same, uh,
On the, yeah, and the health insurance, and I have had nothing but complaints about how much it would cost. Uh, from that, with no other bid, so.
Yeah, I didn't think we should do that either.
I've had at least ten.
I, I just, I don't know how we, I don't know how we cannot simply check to see if we can get it cheaper.
I'm in agreement with you.
I, I would just say the cheaper is not always better. Especially in competitive, in competitive bid situations, especially something that is complicated is insurance. Um, I, I just feel, as I said last time, that we have got a, a good vendor that has done a good job, uh, and, and satisfied with the, satisfied with the, the service and the product. And I don't feel like it's worthwhile to, uh, to go through the time and effort of requesting proposals when I know where I'm gonna end up with, uh, you know, with the same vendor.
I can accept what you're saying with no reservation, but at the same time, what are we gonna, what, how, how is it gonna hurt us? As long as you've got a set of, just like when you write a suspect for a water well or a building, and we adhere to them when we do it, why would we not do that with that way? And see what we're gonna save. We can refuse them at, at, uh, at the point of acceptance, just as simple as we can now, and we'll know what we, we bid. Does that make, does that make common sense?
And I'm gonna relate it to, to my business as an architect. We do a lot of work for governments, and, and most of the time when we have a project, they have to go out to bid. And when you, when you put a, when you go out to bid and you receive a bid for a, a low bid for a product, it's very difficult not to accept that low bid. Based, even though you may know that, uh, you may have a local contractor that has bid maybe a few dollars more than someone that you don't know anything about, has no track record. And I'm not saying that you're fit that, uh, that, that description, but we have run into, well, we've gotten bids on buildings from contractors that are nowhere near that, have no track, uh, no track record with us. But because it is competitively bid, you pretty much have to take that, that low bid.
And always have change order, yeah. Well, and I,
And, and low bid, you know, again, the low price is not always, sometimes it is, but it's not always the best route.
Well, you were a city commissioner for a long time, and I respect your part, you did a good job. I'm not questioning your ability whatsoever. But I also believe every time I ever read that newspaper, I read a bid from y'all, it was lowest or best bid. And so that's a, that, I mean, it's pretty simple, you know, about third grade, we'll work that right out.
Well, the, the lowest is, is, is black and white. I mean, it's, the low bid is always easy to determine, it's a very definitive. But the best sometimes is very subjective, and that's where you get into trouble.
Well, I've, I've seen many times in the water well business, and I've bid plenty of municipality stuff and bonded stuff, as you and I would call it. I've seen them a lot of times when it didn't go that way, the lowest bid got it, you're right. And we came back and worked on it about six months, a year later. So my point is, if you're gonna get time, and the same, my point is, why would we not bid it? I mean, I'm, I ran for office, telling people I wanted to see things bid, and that's just the way I see it now, and I won't change.
You recognize, Mr. Crutchfield.
Uh, where I based mine on. And, and, uh, we've done some vendors that we didn't go out to a bid, and because we felt like the service was greater, and they knowed everything about what we had going, and they could do it actually cheaper. If you get to changing to another company, and you really, somehow you don't like it, it might be a little harder to get back to the company you've been getting a real good service out of it. And I feel like, I, I kind of like to be a straight, straight shooter, like, uh, if we do it for one vendor, you know, and, and we've been doing it all these years, and I've been giving good service, and we feel it's a reasonable, we feel it's a reasonable price, it might not be exactly real reasonable, we feel like it is, you know, we need to do it for all.
Well, maybe so, and, and I agree with you, with what you're saying, except for the fact that unless you know the people involved individually for a long time, know what kind of work they do, you don't know what you get. And with insurance, I don't see how one of us that's up here would be more than qualified. Mr. Don, probably is, because he's dealt with bonds and that for a lot, but for the biggest amount, I'll never go along and never vote not to bid something that I've gone through it to forty-eight years.
I know, I know, uh, you get the insurance. And, uh, it's kind of like I'm picking on this guy from, you know, Bristol, or I'm not, but but I know of people, even businesses that cha, call every year and get prices, and they change. They, you know, every year they'll change to another insurance company. Back forth, they get to the point where most insurance don't even want to give them a quote. Because, you know, they know when they get it out, they're gonna call for that thing, that's where they, it's gonna be a competitive, they're gonna go with the cheapest price, because they, they got a rock bottom of their price, and all or not, you gotta make a little money. If you got, like, he's gotta make money to be able to, to,
Most time when they refuse bids, they don't, they make it enough, they don't want any food anymore. That's been my, that's been my sighting, but anyway, we had to move on.
I stand by my book.
That's all right, that's what you were elected for. All right, move along.
Okay, um, Mr. Westbrook, uh, Mr. Clay Milton, who's here to address any questions about the item number twenty-three. Uh, would you be opposed to us doing item number twenty-three? Because I know he's pressed for a, a big litigation effort over there across the street.
Well, that's, that's fine, but since I know him well, I'm gonna say that, uh, we might get him to wait on us sometime.
That'll be fine too.
Go ahead, Mr. Milton.
He's gonna perform this service for free today.
Go ahead, I take that back.
If I could, Clay, to kind of set it up, uh, in January, on January the fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, the Board of County Commissioners, uh, agreed to the concept of doing a land swap over there where Old Pusa Road is going to be located after the construction of, uh, this new project. And, um, we, with Chipola Nurseries, and we also, uh, agreed to close that road, which at the beginning of the meeting, we asked the commission to allow us to join these two items together as item number twenty-three. And I think Mr. Milton is here to talk about that land swap.
Thanks, Mr. Dean, board, I appreciate you giving me a minute just to explain.
Give you ten.
Just to briefly explain what this is, uh, the city of Marianna is constructing what is gonna be known as Charlie's Way. Um, it's gonna be a new city street, uh, that comes off, basically starts at the intersection of where Pusa Road intersects with the Kanso Highway. And it's gonna be a short street that leads into the Chipola Nurseries property uh, for purpose of a project that they have going on that property. Uh, DOT has agreed to install or is authorizing an installation of a traffic signal at that intersection. Um, per DOT's requirements, they do not want Pusa Road, Charlie's Way, and the Kanso Highway all intersecting at one location. And so the purpose of this is to reroute Pusa Road through Chipola Nurseries property, where it'll then intersect into Charlie's Way. I don't know the exact distance, I don't have the survey in front of me, but it's approximately two or three hundred yards away from where that traffic signal will be located. Uh, this will be a commercial development, my understanding, I'm not involved, the city's not involved in that commercial development, that Chipola Nurseries project, uh, but it will be a, a development right there at the interstate and, and at that intersection. Um, there's two different items before the board. One, my understanding, and as Mr. Dean mentioned, the, the board has previously approved this concept of rerouting Pusa Road. So there's a land swap, um, there's a resolution that I've prepared and forwarded to your attorney. I'm just trying to take some, some of the legwork off of her so that it'd be a little bit easier. So I've got all the information, I've got all the legal descriptions, so I just went ahead and got her permission to go ahead and prepare that resolution using a form that she had previously prepared and sent to me on another deal. Um, so that resolution is to authorize the chairman to sign the documents for purposes of the land swap with Chipola Nurseries. There's two different legal descriptions, and I've attached, uh, I forwarded the surveys, and I apologize, it was late last night when I sent the surveys, but there is attached to the agreement to close Old Pusa Road, there's a site plan that's attached. And if it's in color, it's a little bit easier to understand, but the portion that is located along the western end of Pusa Road is the piece that's gonna be deeded to Chipola Nurseries.
Commissioners, that package, the agenda packet, the very last page is the, uh, picture that Mr. Milton saw.
And it's exhibit C, exhibit C to the road closure agreement. That is, the red kind of outlined area is the piece that's gonna be deeded to Chipola Nurseries. Now, my understanding is, the only portion that the county owns is where that right of way is for Pusa Road. The reason that there's additional property in there, I believe it's already owned by Chipola Nurseries, but the reason for that is, they're wanting that to be established as a separate parcel ID number. So when this deed gets recorded at the clerk's office, that will trigger the property praiser to do a separate parcel ID number. And that's just for future development purposes. What I believe Ms., Ms. Jordan is gonna ask for you to sign is gonna be a statutory quitclaim deed. So there's no warranties of title, as far as the county is concerned, it's just a quitclaim deed from the county to Chipola Nurseries. The other piece in purple, that is highlighted in purple, will be the new route for Pusa Road. Um, and it goes, and there's actually a survey, and that's not really the final survey. The survey that I've attached to your resolution or that I forwarded to Mr. Dean, it's a little, it actually goes all the way to the east boundary of their property. There's a, it, it expands the Pusa Road, it's a one point three some odd acre parcel. So this, this map is not the final, but it does depict at least generally what it is we're doing. But I've provided the surveys for the legal descriptions of what's gonna be attached to the deeds, and you've got those surveys as well. Um, but it's a parcel for purposes of rerouting Pusa Road across Chipola Nurseries property, it'll then intersect into Charlie's Way. So it'll be a land swap between the two entities, the board and Chipola Nurseries. Um, the purpose of the road closure agreement is, there'll be a time lapse in between when Charlie's Way gets constructed, and then Pusa Road is constructed across that property. Chipola Nurseries has asked, um, that Pusa Road from the intersection of Mashburn back to the west just be temporarily closed until the county can construct Pusa Road. Because once the deed's recorded, they then own that portion of it, they don't want just general traffic going through there, and I don't think the county does either for purposes of that construction project. And so there's a route, Mashburn, you can turn on Mashburn, go right up beside the forestry department's property, it's basically the same distance. But the, the purpose of the temporary road closure agreement is that county staff will install signage or whatever, just to close that off to through traffic while that construction's taking place.
Well, this, Clay, this is all in my district, um, and I certainly understand the, the land swap, uh, basically what we're doing. If you're looking at this map, is we're, we're, we're basically given this property.
You're receiving that property and give, that's right, yes, sir.
And then the, the road closure, how long do you think that that will last for?
That, that really, so the city, as far as Charlie's Way construction, they've already bid that out. Um, they had a pre-construction meeting, I believe, either last week or the week before last. Their intent is to start mobilization, I think, next week. So they'll start construction on that very quickly. Now, as far as the, Now, as far as the Pusa Road construction, that's your contractors. I'm not sure when that'll take place. That'll, that'll be within your department of when that takes place.
Good thing in between Mashburn Road, I mean, there's no residents that live on that stretch of road, so they've got a very easy.
County owns on one side and Chipola Nursery owns on the other side.
The only adverse part would be anybody that would formerly be using Pusa Road to go to the interstate. They've gotta take that little bit of a jog. Very, very minor inconvenience. Uh, does this have any impact uh, on the forestry? They've got, uh, they've been doing some clearing back there. Will this have any adverse impact on the forestry?
That, they've got other access directly onto the Kansville Highway.
And do they have access onto a, a Mashburn Road as well?
I don't, I don't believe so. On the backside of their property, I don't believe so. But they do have a driveway that comes directly off of Kansville Highway that enters their property.
I got that all fenced up anyways.
I think they got it fenced up on police remain.
They, since they do have access to Kansville Highway.
Yeah, far free adventure.
All right. For the recommendation, do we need to vote on that?
So we, we've got two different motions that we need, one for the land swap, approving the resolution of the land swap.
Yes, sir.
And then one for the road closure.
Yes, sir. And then once, assuming it gets approved, Mr. Chairman, I'll need to coordinate with you on signing all the documents of Chipola Nurseries.
Yeah, do call. All right, you wanna take them both? Everybody wanna take them both? Happy with that?
I make a motion to approve the um, land swap. The land swap and authorize you to sign a quick clean deed.
I sign, it'd be rough looking, but I.
But I make a motion for you to do that.
Second, got a motion and a second. Take care of those two items. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Oh, yeah. The second one was.
The temporary road closure agreement.
I make a motion that we temporarily close that road until the construction of the new one can be completed.
All right, close the road. What else you wanna do? Anything else while thinking about?
I think that's all we need to do.
Praise the Lord. Let's go. All in favor, raise your hand.
I say that.
Thank you so very much.
Gonna start, thank y'all.
If I ride by, have the window open, make sure you're working.
Verification, Mr. Branch's motion was to uh, approve the land swap. Allow Mr. Westbrook to sign quick clean deed and then also to approve the length of the road closure, temporary road closure.
Yeah, two of them, that's right.
And the resolution should identify all of them to go up and Mr. Westbrook to sign.
Yes, there are two of them. We can go around, we can go down around the corner and come back. We still own two of them. All right, we'll go back up where we left off.
Okay, item number fifteen, Mr. Westbrook. Uh, this is a request to deviate from the county's purchasing policy as far as public app, publicly advertising for the uh, bid of replacing two fuel pumps for gasoline and diesel at Road and Bridge. Uh, the highly specialized equipment, the public advertisement would not reach everybody that needs to be reached. Staff has uh, competitively obtained quotes and we're asking for the deviation from purchasing, uh, from the purchasing policy and awarding to the low bid, which was thirty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars.
And this is budgeted out of these two? Just included in, uh, this year's budget?
Yes.
And it covers it, covers the cost?
It's higher than we anticipated, but we're going, we're gonna, we gotta make it work.
And the company that was a low bid, the only one that I'm familiar with is Petro flow out of Chipley. Um, is the low bidder somebody that we're familiar with and?
The low bid's out of Tallahassee, so they're obviously about an hour away.
Yeah, that's a long way.
All three of the vendors were, were bidding basically on the same, same product.
Go ahead, Doc.
Deviate, I understand, again, we're deviating from the purchase box because of what now?
We're not doing a public advertisement. We're, uh, we solicited V H via uh, phone call or in a, a email proposal.
We've got three competitive.
We've got three competitive deals. And again, it's highly specialized equipment. If you would've done a public advertisement, it potentially, you would have not have breached the folks that specifically do this type of uh, work.
This day and time, I'd be lucky to have them in stock, but I have to build them, make them.
I'll offer a motion to uh, to uh, deviate from our typical public purchasing policy and uh, uh, allow the staff to enter into a agreement with uh, the low bidder.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Move along. Buy the fuel pump.
Item number seven, uh, sixteen, Mr. Westbrook is the uh, request board approval of contract twenty-four, twenty-five dash fourteen for debris removal purposes, purchase, uh, debris removal and disposal services. Uh, the, this was competitively bid. We received proposals. And there were actually two proposals, one from D R C and one from Serus. Uh, the one from Serus requested a modification to the contract. So we're only entertaining the first one at this time, D R C. Uh, they were again competitively, uh, we've received competitive bids and we're asking the commission to approve awarding a five-year contract to D R C.
Is there a question? Is it some reason we wanna do it for five years instead of three? I'm gonna follow Mr. Donfro's lead sometime.
Rather than doing this every three years, it's something that we're, and they did not ask for uh, an increase in the price. It's the same price for whatever the contract there it is.
Good read.
We've, we've had a relationship with both the Serus and the D R C. We've worked with both of those companies before.
Yes.
Uh, but there's, there's something in the contractual request, request for contractual changes with the Serus that we're not comfortable with.
Yeah, and Michelle may can, uh, jump in if she wants to, but as in layman's terms, as I understand it, the um, Serus has asked for a modification to the contract, which would remove the liability that we want them to have as far as identifying what debris is eligible for pickup and shifting that to us and.
The house of it.
And so we're, uh, Michelle looked at it and she does not agree that we should make that change.
Right, and they signed a contract that included that same language the last time that we agreed with them. So.
Think staff has reached out to them, uh, Mr. Jordan, and uh, they're, we're gonna tell them that, you know, look, we're not gonna change the contract for you. So if you want to remain, uh, if you want us to select you, then you're gonna have to leave contract loan or we're gonna go to the next one.
They can't write our contract. We need to write.
We do, we need two vendors. I mean, we have another Hurricane Michael and probably, and hopefully we won't. Uh, but if we do, we probably need more than just the one vendor, so uh, we'll need to continue to work on that. Do we go to the third?
Eventually, I'd discuss this and uh, as far as we recommended going ahead with D R C, uh, instead of holding off all of them. Uh, and then would you, we do need a follow-up, but if that happens in my y'all's side, I would be, we're uh, we'll have D R C, y'all let, when you accept that, we can do an emergency. The order we can add to, um, so at least we will have.
We should have that back to the commission at the next meeting. They either will accept it or they won't, and we'll, we already have another person.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Get my role back to the third one in ranking?
We will.
That's the plan?
That is, yes.
Motion to approve the contract, D R, D R C emergency services.
Motion in a second to approve D R C's contract services. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, move on.
Uh, Mr. Westbrook, item number seven, seventeen is the uh, grant agreement, which provides correctional officers with salary assistance. This is the same as the uh, sheriff's department grant agreement. It's just for corrections and it provides uh, additional salary money through F D L E. Uh, and it does also include a salary adjustment to increase the pay for sworn officers at the correctional facility. We're asking the commission to approve the grant. Agreed.
The loop.
Motion by Commissioner Brant, the second by Chris Field. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, move along.
Mr. Westbrook, item number eighteen is just approve, uh, getting the commission to approve the uh, budget schedule for this coming year or next year. Uh, as you can, you know, comments or questions, but we're just getting this in front of you so we can schedule those public meetings. Just in case uh, we need to have every one of them, we wanna get a public notice so that we're not scrambling to try and do that when the time comes.
So the ones that are highlighted in uh, bold are, are the ones that the commission will need to uh,
Well, the workshops.
Workshops, yeah.
Yes, we're asking you to put it on the calendar, uh, you know, we're, uh, like, it's possible, we may not need all those workshops. But if you put them on the, uh, in the paper, then you don't have to scramble to do it if we need to have.
And we're moving uh, the regular meeting from uh, on the twenty-second from nine o'clock, from six o'clock to nine o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Part of what we need to do if we adopt this.
Yes, sir.
Talkable to what we've been doing in the past. I'll offer, I'll offer a motion to approve the uh, the uh, budget schedule, the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six uh, budget schedule.
Here's a second.
You uh, sorry, uh.
All right, go ahead.
Something was highlighted, you said?
I don't. I, 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 I said that before I looked at it real close.
Oh, okay.
What I'll highlight is mandatory all be here. Is that what's up? I, I'm on, well, get back to what I'm looking at right here. I know on August twenty-second, I'm gonna be out of town. But I don't think that's gonna conflict with anything.
That's not, that's not, that's just really bad.
Thinking of how, how, the high bowl was what we need to really be looking at.
Yeah, no, sir, that uh, I, I would get all of these on my calendar, but that meeting on August the twenty-second, Mr. Crutchfield, is really just the trim notice uh, needs to be mailed out. So that's not something.
Thought I just wanna make out aware. Thank you.
Majority of them.
All right, what's the board's pledge?
I'm, I'm, I put forth a motion to approve it.
You have a motion second?
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
I got three seconds. You put them all down. One motion and three seconds. I'll take them all. They were hardly come by a while ago. Anyway, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, the same sign. Move along.
Uh, item number nineteen and uh, Mr. Kill, I'm gonna make a run at it. You might have to jump in them. Uh, but this is the renewal of the one cent sales tax. The, we're asking the commission to schedule a public hearing only uh, on that ordinance to renew that tax. And uh, it is proposed to potentially change the language for that. Uh, we don't identify that one cent tax to go directly into the transportation trust fund. Uh, it would not be identified uh, that way. Um, so we're asking for the commission to schedule that public hearing um, seven twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five.
So am I hearing you correctly that uh, when we, when we vote to schedule this public thing, we're, we're already identifying?
The, the language, I believe, is uh, what is being proposed to not put that money, not be required to put that money, but the commission can decide whatever they wanna do uh, with it after we do it. I mean, if that's something that you wanted to do outside of the ordinance, you could do that.
I think we took that vote already though, haven't?
No.
We tabled it.
You obviously gave me direction on that, and I did send the uh, draft proposed ordinance to the Department of Revenue, um, to their legal department. And they have since advised that based on the language as drafted, we will not need the audit that we anticipated. So just to kinda help alleviate some of the board's concerns about that, that is, I have that in writing from D O R. Uh, that we will not need an audit.
Pay it to us, please.
Do we ever figure out?
Ma'am, this is rough numbers. She said twenty-five to thirty thousand about.
But we don't have to have.
We don't have to.
If we go this route.
Correct.
Check on that with our.
I, I came out in favor of not restricting ourselves with the ordinance to necessarily use those funds for Road and Bridge, even though I think the intent would be to do that. I just feel like going forward, uh, way into the future uh, by restricting them to Road and Bridge, if we ever did have any other need that just had to be done, uh, whatever reason, uh, you know, we, we wouldn't wanna restrict ourselves.
And I wanna repeat what uh, Michelle said at the last meeting. If you do restrict yourself in order to change it in the future, you would have to have a referendum.
Unless something with the legislature changes.
Well, with some appropriate modality, that could use funding for.
Uh, it's for any public purpose other than um, debt service. If you vote to use the funds for debt service, then that has to be backed up by a referendum.
I'm thinking these should go to the road department, Rick, but it says in Florida statute two oh six point six oh. The such fund shall solely be for acquiring a right of way, construction, reconstruction, operation, maintenance, repair of, of uh, transportation facilities, roads, bridges, bicycle lanes, and protection path, pathways thereon, or the reduction of bond, inter-debt of such counties or special road and bridge districts of such counties incur for road and bridge or other transportation.
That's for the small county surtax? That's what this is.
Are you reading from the uh, code, the current?
Think what he's reading from is the gas tax.
And that, that would make sense, but this tax is the small county surtax, which is a separate, a separate tax.
Okay.
Uh, when is this, when is the budget, when is the public meeting requested to be set?
July twenty-second.
Don't you?
You know, I, I think, I think that it needs to stay, reason, what I reason think it needs to stay with them, cause I, I feel like they can honestly say they probably don't have enough money as it is. And some reason or another, somewhere down the road, it opens up the door that it could be moved to something else, which you're gonna take away from roads, which is what we have a big issue with. I think all y'all can agree with roads. It will have a big issue. So if we try to cripple them a little bit, what's happened to? I know I agree with Mr. Donfro. We got, got to do what we can do to keep them going, but if you take, you open the door, you don't know what's gonna happen years to come. Somebody else, maybe they're sitting on that board, look at it a little different and take out all that money away. You know, and that's earmarked for them. It's gonna be harder to do.
All we're doing is cutting our throats if we do it that way, but it could be looked at that way. We restricting our own, we're restricting our own power.
Yeah, well, uh, uh, but I mean, you know.
Should we get our? Upcoming budget before we make that decision?
Um, well, as I understand, this has to be done prior to January the first of uh, of next year. And um.
What I'm saying is, will we have a kind of an overview of what the next year's budget make by the time we do this public meet?
You know, if it has to be done prior to January, theoretically, you could uh, you know, kick the can down the road to a later date. Michelle, you wanna comment on that or?
Yeah, you have until December, really, to get this adopted. D O R would prefer that you adopt it uh, as, as soon as possible. But we, we have really planned to wait to present this to you all, at least until July, so that you could draw your budget discussion.
But really prolonging is not gonna help. Problem we're having here, you know, uh, we just, I, I just know if I feel and the rest of the board don't feel like it, I mean, that's just the way it gonna go, but that's how I feel.
It, it may help. It would help me to know what the next year's budget before I predict this or not.
You'll, you'll have had one day of budget workshops prior to. You'll have had one day of budget workshops prior to the next board meeting.
Yes.
But would you prefer to advertise this for your first meeting in August? That way you've had time to go through your budget?
Or would you want to go ahead and schedule it for the twenty-fourth?
I, I'll offer, I, I know where I feel on this. I think we need to provide ourselves flexibility moving forward to be able to use those funds however we see fit, knowing, knowing that the road and bridge department is gonna be relying on these to keep our roads in good condition. And, you know, should future boards or any of us make a decision to use those funds elsewhere, um, and not fund the road and bridge department adequately, that'll have consequences.
Yes, I would imagine.
But, yeah.
Go ahead, Doc.
But the road and bridge business is gonna continue to escalate. Roads will continue to deteriorate. How are we gonna plug that deficit?
We can continue to use these funds for road and bridge.
Oh, yeah.
But if, if we start using, I know the intent, but we start using it for other purposes, it'll get away from, before we realize it.
May, may have used it up.
Yes. Exactly. And, and we know that we have a dire need for road repairs and construction. That's gonna always be there. It's not going away.
There again.
You'll be magical thinking to think that it is.
As a commissioner, if you vote to use those funds for other than road and bridge, your constituents are gonna let you know that and they're gonna.
Well, well, I know that Commissioner Donofro, but I've been around a long time and I know there've been funds that have been delegated for certain expenses, I mean, they slowly erode and use for other things. And then it comes down to needing it for a specific purpose that was originally dissipated or the money's not there.
It's already gone.
Yep.
I, I'll offer a motion to go ahead and schedule the public hearing, which we can continue to discuss this for and make a decision after July twenty-second. I think we need to go ahead and make a decision on this.
Yes, second. Chair, let it take a second.
I'll suck up the public hearing.
Got a motion and a second, schedule for a public hearing. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Okay.
You don't have to have a public hearing.
All right, move along.
Item number twenty, Mr. Westbrook, is, uh, request board approval of a modification change order to the grant agreement for solid waste slash, uh, recycling. With the change in salaries that was done by the commission a month or so ago, uh, the state will allow us to modify the grant agreement to incorporate additional salary money for the, uh, two, for two employees.
For what? Two employees?
For the two employees that received those funds. This will allow us to get additional dollars under that grant to pay those, that extra two dollars an hour.
So this is in the recycling program?
Yep.
Yes, sir. The grant agreement we have has a salary cap, the hourly cap for salaries. With our two dollar increase, uh, month or so ago, that went over what the grant cap was. So they've increased the salary cap within the grant so we can continue to pay those from grant funds.
So, so the grant dollars will be used to fund those increases, uh, in salaries for those two positions?
Yes, sir.
Oh, we, we, we already have those employed or not yet?
No, they're, they're employed. They're full-time, year-round employees.
Oh, okay, already employed then. Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion to approve the solid waste grant change order number one for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five.
Got a motion now here, six?
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Crutchfield. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Moving on.
Mr. Westbrook, item number twenty-one is request board approval, uh, to, for someone to sign the documents associated with the settlement reached with pharma. The opioid litigation for the, that the state of Florida has negotiated. We're just identifying the county administrator as the person that would sign the, uh, the settlement paperwork on behalf of the county. We are not negotiating the settlement. The settlement has already been negotiated by the state.
So, over, sir.
Second. Give it a second. All in favor, six, five, and right, three, and your right hand. All right, move along. That's about it, Ed.
Twenty-two, Mr. Westbrook, is, uh, the last item and it involves the Townes needs. It's a change order. In November, the commission approved to authorize the use of District Four construction funds to be used to resurface a short stretch of road between basically the railroad tracks and Highway ninety in Townes needs. The, when the contractor was over there working on it, he noticed a drainage issue associated with that roadwork and has recommended, recommended to the Townes needs to resurface the drainage area to get the water off the road to stop the, that would eliminate the potential bonding in the road. Uh, the change order was submitted by the contractor and we're asking the commission to approve the use of, uh, District Four road construction money to, uh, pay for the change order, which is seventy-five hundred dollars.
Mr. Brant, are you satisfied with what they're doing there? Yeah, all right.
My motion to approve.
A motion to approve. So I hear a second.
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Brant, a motion from Mr. Crutchfield. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. About runs us out of time, I don't.
That's, that's it, Mr. Westbrook.
All right. Any other things for anybody on the board that want to bring up? Donofro?
Jeffrey, can I talk to you right after the meeting, uh, couple of issues?
Ye- yes, ma'am, you, you may be recognized. Even though it is, even though it is the board members' chance to talk, go ahead.
I just want to know, I know a while back, and I know I missed, uh, some meetings in June, but.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Could you state your name?
Oh, Susan Copelman, Susan Copelman. Um, I just wanted to know a while back, I don't remember what meetings it was, what month it was in, about boondocking. Ms. Sweeney had brought it up. Has there been any more research done on that?
I, I'm not understanding what you're talking about.
On boondocking, which is through the county, has there been any more research done on that?
I'm not familiar with the term, Mrs. Copelman.
I'm, I'm, uh, I guess I may be, and I'm about, I remember when it brought up, what brought up, I would be.
It's been a while.
Yes, so boondocking is when people are allowed to camp on their property, um, for an indetermined period of time without any utility hookups. So, um, the county had talked about looking into whether we wanted to create any, um, regulations about boondocking. And that was taken to the planning commission, but they have not made any determinations yet.
So, does this relate to RVs? Um, cause I know that I've had some calls about, had several calls about, uh, a property out on the Caverns Highway, uh, Living Waters, I, I don't know anything about that, but it's right, uh, in the curve on Caverns Road. There's been a couple of RVs out there. I talked to Amber, I think, about it, or maybe I talked to you, Kim.
You did talk to me.
Is that a similar situation?
Well, they aren't boondocking because they were actually hooked up to the utilities of the building. But that has been resolved. They put a mobile home out there for their parsonage. They were using the RVs as their parsonage. But they're supposed to remove the RVs from the property now and they not be hooked up. But if boondocking could generally is RVs, but it could also be tents or something like that.
Well, going back to Living Waters, you know, that when that facility was originally constructed, it was constructed as a funeral. And there was a, uh, a, a tank out there for receiving formaldehyde from the embalming process. And, uh, I think there was one concern that was voiced to me that, uh, I think the RVs may have been putting sewage into the formaldehyde tank instead of the septic tank. And I, we probably just need to check into that.
Yeah, we'll look into that. I, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Is still at the planning commission?
So it ain't what up to you yet. Okay, thank you.
But, but it is being discussed.
Yes.
So sometimes they'll come back to the commission with some type of recommendation, potentially?
Yes, most likely.
Anything else anybody wants to say?
Hold right ahead.
You recognize.
Ask about, uh, internets or the ways they're working on or stuff about the internet or.
Broadband?
Yeah.
Um, uh, Rhett, do you, are you aware where we are with the broadband? I know I've seen a couple of emails, but go ahead.
Yes, sir. I got a update from Connecton just a couple of weeks ago. So Connecton was awarded the ARDOF funds from the federal broadband, uh, dispersment funds. And they are working with West Florida Electric for pole attachment agreements so they can start building out the ARDOF areas within the West Florida Electric Service Area. Um, outside of that, we do have other internet service providers still working on grant funds to expand their areas of service. So it's not one of the projects that the county is directly involved in other than help facilitate relationships with the ISPs and the power companies, which is something we've been doing for a couple of years now.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. But it's not a county project. It's private.
Well, I, I, I kindly told them that, uh, uh, we haven't heard anything lately, but I thought they were working on trying to find still somebody working on trying to get a fund.
You recognize this, Donofro?
A cou- a couple of other items, uh, while, while we're kind of roundtaping it. Um, Blue Springs Road is the work out there completed the first time. Whatever phase was going from the, uh, seventy-one back to Spring Chase, is that totally completed now? Are they still trying to find?
Drive out there and come see me and I find out.
No, sir. It's not complete, so they just got power to the lift station, um, the last week or so. We're waiting to do a startup with the, uh, lift station sales company that set it all up. Um, so once we do the startup on the lift station and everything checks out, we can start doing the on-lock connections of that phase. So that'd be from Highway seventy-one to about Spring Chase, not including Spring Chase. Um, so we're waiting on the lift station startup and then the, uh, on-lock services can be initiated. And then there is some asphalt deficiencies in the shoulder work that was added on. So they have been patching that as of last week, um, but simple answer is no, it's not complete.
Final, it has, the final friction layer been put down on the main road or?
No, yeah, so they were waiting to finish the, uh, patching the shoulders and then got to do the final striping. All they have now is the center line.
Okay, then, then one other question, this may be for, for Kelsey or for Rhett. I know that we've got a deadline, an event that's scheduled to take place pretty soon out at, uh, uh, the Endeavor Convention Center. I know they put some asphalt on the front parking lot. Do we still feel pretty good about the irrigation, landscaping and paving work that, that'll be completed in time for that event?
Yes, sir. I spoke with the landscaper yesterday. They are continuing the irrigation. That should be finished by tomorrow. They have a plant scheduled to deliver tomorrow and Thursday, um, to try to get those installed. And there's some additional sod that has to be brought in. I spoke with the, uh, the site contractor. They have, uh, striping for the parking lot scheduled for first of next week. And now that the parking lot is finished, the electrician will be coming out to install the lamp post and get that tightened up. So it is close, but everything is moving forward and we look like we can accomplish it by the deadline.
Thank you.
Can the board chairman speak, please?
Absolutely.
If you, if you go to Blue Springs Road, you won't have to ask anybody. And the manholes, when the gentleman came here about two months ago, told us it was gonna be two weeks. Well, they must not have a calendar because I, I, that two weeks is going on about two months. But the manholes are at an angle. We're in jeopardy of a, one heck of a, of a liability. If we don't feel about it, somebody gonna come see us. Well, they hit one of those manholes and went off the road and wrecked. So there's your answer for a lot of that. I travel that road.
Yeah.
Three, four times, five times a day.
In your opinion, then it's not, it's not quality paving job, except that's what I'm.
It'd be like me doing you, I'm not putting concrete. So, and, and I know that's not an easy job and I understand that. And I've always wanted to give a contractor plenty of time, but at the same time, you got a lot of people, and I hear about it every day of my life. Not about the welder, they need it, about the road. I yield my time back. If anybody got anything, anybody in the left out there anywhere wants to talk? We don't. Any, if them Brant move, I mean, if Master Brant move, we right.